Good evening, welcome to the school board meetings Monday, August 10th, 2020, six o'clock. This is probably largely boarding with each meeting, seven building, like probably quarter.
This is Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Gayhar.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarell.
Here.
Do you have a quorum and we'll continue. We will notice, has been noticed per state statutes, do we have any new anticipation? I've seen any, we'll dispense with bringing that and move to our minutes. That would be the regular session minutes of July 27. Any questions? Anything else? Hearing none, quickie promotion.
I move to approve the minutes of July 27, 2020, regular sessions, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll move in second to approve the minutes of the July 27, 2020, regular special school board meeting as presented.
This is Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhar.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarell.
Yes.
General other fund bills, Mr. Truman. The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number 140421, 2140540, wire number 88 through 117, and ACH check number 011 through 015, combined amount of $1,167,499. Was about all providing additional information on several of the bills in the report.
I have several questions. First one, on the agile sports, is that something that the Booster Club is helping pay for?
Is that for the huddle?
The huddle.
Piece, I think they did originally.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, but I think there's an annual license.
Right.
So that's what this is.
So they're not, they're not doing that annually, they're just doing it for one time?
I'm not, that's my understanding, I'm not 100% sure of that.
Okay. Um, next one, on the Apex Learning. It says the unlimited online courses, is that, have we always had unlimited, or are we upgrading this year, or what's?
No, we've always purchased.
We've always, okay, right. Got it, alright. Um, I didn't know if that was something new.
But that's used in options and our SOFOs program, and sometimes for.
Yeah. Um, just a comment on the, on the annual premium for the property insurance, great job. I'm getting, I'm getting that, you know, seeking out a new company.
Yes.
Putting that out for bids, so yeah, great job on that thing.
Thank you, it's nice because we can leverage with like 60 school districts.
Yeah.
It's a huge difference.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah.
Um, on the city of Elkhorn for the crossing guards and police liaison, how often do they bill us for that? Is that like an annual?
It's quarterly.
Oh, it's quarterly, okay.
Yeah, so, and even though it says crossing, there is really no crossing guards because we do our own crossing guards now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but it is for the.
The police liaison, got it, okay. Um, and then the Edge Newity, the online programming, is that something new, or is that an expense due to COVID, or?
The Edge Newity, they started using last year, it's Compass Learning Odyssey, it's the same company, the same parent company.
Okay.
But Edge Newity is their class platform, and they have a couple different options, so it's a, has a little bit different curriculum feel than Apex where Apex is that's heavy edge nudity has more interaction, computer, you know, integration with that, and then we have the option to provide our own teacher, like with Apex, or to contract with them to have the teacher provided.
Okay, so that was something we started using before COVID.
Right, well with COVID, we'll be using it a lot more.
A lot more, okay.
So, that impacts and increases the number of seats needed.
Got it. Is it all the six, or is it?
So Edge Newity will do, when you buy the, the package, per student, you get four core subjects and two electives. So their English, social studies, math, and science, and then they get to choose their tool.
Okay, alright. I think that was all I had.
I guess I would ask Sarah or Amy, I know you're on the meeting, anything to add to that, or did I cover that accurately?
Sounds good to me.
Jason, I can comment too, um, I would believe that Edge Newity billing is for the Compass Odyssey program for 2020, 2021, for the K8 students, and there'll be additional billing then for the options program as they finalize their contract. But that covers a number of seats for all of our students kindergarten through eighth grade.
And we purchased when Compass Odyssey was first purchased by the district, they had a lifetime license purchase, which the district made a huge investment in, well over, probably a decade ago roughly.
It was when, yeah, we got the federal dollars back in 2008.
Okay, and then we have an annual renewal fee with them, so that's that fee that you see, but that initial investment was tens of thousands, probably around $80,000.
Yeah, so it's almost a hundred thousand, wow.
I remember discussing whether or not we should, you know, pull the plug and go on it.
Yeah, so they keep updating it, another company will buy on them, and then name changes.
Okay.
The cube pen that you'll see in their computers, that was actually, we ordered that last year, it took until now to get it.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, it was ordered, I think, like in February, and then it just got delayed with.
Yeah.
Supposedly COVID, and yeah, so they just got it last week, and our main driver is Darren, maybe it's just giddy. He's very proud of it.
I bet he is.
He is.
Yeah, that's, that's all I had.
Other questions? Not hearing any, so looking for motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of August 10th, 2020, check numbers 140421 to 140540, wire numbers 88 to 117, and ACH check numbers 011 to 015, in the combined amount of $1,167,499.2 cents, as presented.
There is a.
Second.
There's a move in second to approve the general and other fund bills of August 10th, 2020, checks numbered 140421, 140540, wire numbers 88 to 117, ACH check numbers 011 to 015, and the combined amount of $1,167,499.2 cents, as presented. Real call.
This is Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhar.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yeah.
Mr. Scarell.
Yeah.
A resolution to, for cash flow purposes. Yeah, each, each year we do, or the school boards ask to consider a resolution to approve of either a promissory note or a line of credit to meet our immediate cash flow needs for the school district, and you'll see, I think there's a statistic sheet, which is below the resolution, it's on a different sheet, Jason, on the agenda, that kind of gives you some history of, of our borrowing, we've done a line of credit now for about seven years, and we use what used to be People's Bank, now Advia, and it works out very convenient for us, and the cost is very minimal, since we don't need to borrow very often, we only do about two or three times a year, usually November or December timeframe, and then May, June, and you kind of see the history of, of the cost for borrowing, and our cash positions will go with the year, so we don't really have to borrow as much, you don't borrow for the whole year, we just borrow as we need it, sometimes it's actually just two or three days.
Yeah.
So, we talked to them again, and they're, they're certainly interested in continuing that arrangement, at the prime variable rate, and estimate the cost to be about $4,000 for the, for the whole year. But alright, then I think there's a sheet too, gives you just kind of a breakdown of the, when we actually borrow, it shows last year's actual in terms of when we borrow, then we use our state equalization aid to replenish that borrowing each time, so some of those is like maybe two or three days, sometimes it's a week or so. It goes to the financial management, you can see it.
Yes.
Three, twelve years ago, we were borrowing.
Yeah.
Interest of a hundred, $162,000.
Exactly.
Now it's $4,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if, if we could convince the state somehow to simply change the distribution of state aids, but even a couple of weeks, we probably didn't need to do that, but.
Yeah.
We did ask them, we brought that up in a superintendent meeting, and NASA's office and representatives, they said that they looked at that, but then they would have to cash flow borrow.
Oh.
So maybe there's.
Okay.
But they said they were gonna look closer to see, well, how much would the state have to cash flow borrow compared to districts and for the state.
Yeah.
Then COVID.
Yeah, right.
Other questions for? Hearing none, quickie promotion.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $2 million, as presented.
I'll second it.
I move in second to approve the resolution authorizing the taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in the amount not to exceed $2 million, as presented.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhar.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yeah.
Mr. Scarell.
Yes.
Motion carried. Intergovernmental agreement with Williams Bay.
Alright, Williams Bay Superintendent reached out to me, um, there's a school district, a North Keel School District, who sent a letter for an invite out to all school districts around the state, inviting them to partner with them, and they would provide their online services for students during this time. So Williams, Bill White, the Superintendent Williams Bay, and myself, we talked, and he sent over kind of a, basically a agreement, similar, well, it was the Keel agreement, and we looked at it. I met with Tricia Spiny, we looked to see, is this something from a fiscal standpoint, does it make sense from a staffing resources for that dollar amount, and utilizing edge nudity as they would for those students, it does make fiscal sense, so we felt like it would be a win-win for both school districts, we already partnered with Williams Bay on our current college academy, and so basically this intergovernmental agreement would reflect that same type structure that they were offered from the Keel School District, and bring them in as a a partner school district, which would allow students from Williams Bay who wanted the online services to remain a student of Williams Bay, just like they do in the current college academy. But the cost or the payment that they would provide would cover our instructional costs and the immature costs associated with providing.
Okay. Do they anticipate, how much do you anticipate?
The only anticipation handful is on a, a large number. You know, they're relative, I think they're around 850. No, it, it could be more than what he's anticipating, we're, we're saying between three to five percent, I think we'll be around five percent, around five. Do you want to go with that? He's thinking it's a handful, if it was around five percent, then be closer to forty students.
What are their plans for opening up?
All of the county schools are very, so we have almost the same model, we've all been meeting together.
Well, I didn't know anyone was not opening at all.
Whitewater, which is a county school, they, you know, they haven't been working with the health department or been in the meetings, I don't know why, three of their, maybe they have four schools up there, they, the superintendents of three of their schools fall in the Walworth County boundaries, but I think that may just be their location at the school.
Right, because they probably.
Now, East Shore hasn't been meeting with the county as much, because they, and, you know, for like, all of them have a touch of Walworth, but really, so they're all a little, they're slightly different than the Walworth County schools.
I was curious what we were thinking.
They're a face-to-face model with the, the three tiers depending on the instruction rates.
Okay.
Hybrid or online.
And how often do we get aid from them for this?
Uh, with the, I have to double check, I'm off the top of my head.
As soon as the enrollment numbers are final, they get a bill.
Yeah, and then we had a, they.
I believe it's twice, twice a year, basically, like the third Friday, second Friday.
Okay, alright, and then a student no longer enrolled, there's that in there too.
We do a snapshot the third Friday of September, yeah.
Okay. Alright.
And, and if they don't do a, you know, if they unroll at the, um.
But it doesn't say.
Well, these are, as soon as enrollment numbers are final, we'll fill it, so it's a little different than what we have set up for the current college academy, we build those two times a year, but once we have those enrollment numbers, we would fill them, and then if they're, if they end earlier, then they would get a refund for that enrollment, that's how we have it.
Okay.
So do we run that on semesters as opposed to you run our in-person on trimesters?
Uh, no, we did shift them to trimesters as well.
Because we.
The question on their part, yeah.
And, and maybe there on semester, so I was just wondering about that language.
You're right. No, like, you have to have, because there's a bunch of options in there.
But maybe it's something to do with.
Yeah.
Maybe the midpoint of the year.
Right, right, you know, whatever, like, I don't know what.
Who's supposed to.
Williams Bay is on a semester system, so I think since we're billing that for the, for the billing purposes to follow their semester schedule.
Okay, I just asked because of the difference.
And I think it would be advantageous for us to leave it at those terms.
Okay.
On a semester basis.
That's fine.
Are there questions in the agreement?
It said that the local mentor, that the district shall provide liaison, but are they going to be actually in the pool itself for options, using our tutors as well?
Um, yes, they'll be able to come in for the tutoring as needed there, but the program we're setting them up on, that edge nudity, it's not the same learning, learning type program, it's generally usable for students.
Okay.
So, um, we weren't planning on having, you know, having the electives over Tuesday and Thursday, Tricia had a piece of her own capacity there, and if they're selecting to be online.
Yeah, especially if we're moving in rent, so we're building them.
Right.
And transition ourselves.
Other questions?
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Williams Bay School District as presented.
Third second.
Second.
I move in second to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Williams Bay School District as presented.
This is Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhar.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarell.
Yes.
Maybe.
The important discussion items review of the latest CDC and more of county mitigation.
Alright, at the last board meeting, um, one of the, this plan from the Walworth County wasn't formalized or put into a document to be utilized, it is now at a point where we can share, they sent this out to us last Friday, and so the, the portion I want to review, our reopening plan covers a lot of these concepts and the language, this is incorporated within that reopening plan, but at the very end is appendix E, which was the, which was the, the question in relationship to what stages, you know, or structure, or instructional model, I'm sorry, would our school be in, dependent upon these stages? Now, I preface this, and I wouldn't recommend that we post this on our website, and here too, I think people look at it from very black and white.
Right.
Because the other caveat is, they said this would serve as kind of a guide, but we need to have conversations around what that, you know, guide looks like within your school, um, so this is just a rubric, two or more indicators that are red, this would be that highest level, which we need to have conversations about being in that remote learning model, at least for a time period, that online learning. Uh, one red and two yellows would be conversations about that high level of mitigation and limited learning, um, at the 612 level, and tighter mitigation constraints at the elementary level in that scenario, and then the minimal to moderate would be the face-to-face with more significant mitigation factors here, and then note of minimal community transmission um, would be, you know, less mitigation things could potentially be in place, so, you know, and, and that doesn't necessarily mean like, a mitigation factor can be, you don't have balls of recess because you're sharing balls, um, you know, it's just individual toys or activities like that, you know, that could be a mitigation factor, but as there's note of minimal risk, that you can then release some of those restrictions and allow people to have that more, for lack of a better term, normalized sense within that school building, so we have identified different strategies and structures throughout those different mitigation realms, but the first two would be face-to-face learning, the third one would be where we need to look at that hybrid model, and then the fourth one would be that remote learning. You can look at, anybody can go to the county website and look at it. You can see the same dashboard, this is what they're referring to, so right now we'd have one red and one yellow, so it'd be in that second tier. Okay, I better open up over my deck. So, one red, or two to three, and yellow indicators, so in having conversations with them, this is, and this is where they said that they felt that we were at currently. We're projecting, and hopefully by the start of the school year, to be down into the note of minimal community transmission, but what can throw this off, and what's interesting is, um, testing due to the outbreak in the south, there's a shortage on tests in the area now. So where before the county was really doing a lot of tests, doing the drive-through tests and so forth, those tests have been reallocated and shifted from the undero level down to the south, so now they're only testing if you have significant symptoms.
Right.
And so, because now you're only testing people with real significant symptoms, um, a couple things happen, one, your,
Yeah.
you know, the percent positivity will go up more than likely.
Right.
And two, your overall case rates may drop because you're not testing as many people. So, but that takes time and plug, so that's why we have to have conversations with them to discuss, is that really the red because of a concern over you're seeing that infection rate trimming out, or is it red because we don't have the same metric that you've had for a while, a lot of us built? And then likewise, when we look at this yellow here, that's related to PPE, they would also know through their contacting the hospitals, are you really in a crisis and in charge of that? Or is there an order that's just around the corner for that, so it's still, we need to get context for it, but this is kind of that guy. And the county will not tell us, you need to go to online, you need to go to hybrid, they'll work with us, and we can. Questions, but they're not going to make that determination, that's for us.
Yes, people can find this document on the county website?
No, it's for, you know, working with schools, and any document is, people could request a public record, but at this point, they haven't had legal review, and they don't publish anything until legal.
Sorry, okay, just a point.
Yeah, that's a good question, so, since legal hasn't reviewed this yet, they don't have it published. Any questions on that? Alright, other than that, I'd say, you know, we continue to acquire the PPE and the equipment that we need for the start of the school year, the current timeframes are, are actually pretty good, so the concerns or the worries of the beginning of summer, that this material and the materials aren't going to be available, and I'm running into that, and starting to see things on close-up websites, like Wooed was, is a sister company of Amazon, and I was starting to see PPE, so I think there's probably maybe a little bit overproduction that has gone on in some stuff. Uh, but as discussing with Bill, like the face shields that we will have for staff and students, uh, the face coverings, anyone's guess how long will those things last, so that's, we'll have to keep it tight, we're ordering more than we need to start this school year, but I don't know, you know, how long will the, the plastic covering last on a first grader shield?
Right.
You know, before it breaks, or is that, so, we'll, we'll have to monitor that in their view order, and hopefully the supply chain stays in good shape. Uh, and we also hope that the federal package that's rumored, and there's quite a bit of money in there for schools, I guess we'll see where that ends up. And, uh, let's see, we'll do, look at, any other questions on that before you go to the conclusion restraint report?
Uh, I was just curious, um, was there a lot more feedback from staff after our meeting, and, and then I, I know you presented it to to them in a couple different sessions, I mean, how did things kind of land, or?
I think people in general and overall, the feedback that I got, that people felt very much more reassured after going through the plan in more depth and seeing what's there in the plan, uh, there was a lot of anxiety and, and even, you know, anger in some cases over the school district making the decision not to require face coverings, with the governor's order, I think that.
Yeah.
Tamped down, um, I don't think people, it's really set into that governor's order, at least the governor's order as is, goes three weeks into the school year as well, but I think that gives time for people to look and see, so there is a lot of, I, I got some passionate emails, I'll call it, related to that topic in particular, uh, but I also think, I got passionate emails on the other side of it. Uh, it's one that I, I think the school district, you know, looking at all factors and everything into consideration, I think we did the best we could and threaded a needle to, to meet the staff needs as best as possible. Um, the staff equipment survey, and going through that, there's things, you know, I'd love to be able to rank all their wish lists, because we have very specific PPE that's been identified as beneficial, and we did have an open-ended question, are there other items we'd like us to consider, um, so, and those that we can, or makes sense, or, or there's a large percentage that really wanted that, you know, we went ahead and moved forward on that, there's some things that are more an individual preference that they're asking for, that they just can't do like on a large scale, like provide five tiers of scrubs for every staff member. Would be a cost for, but we could allow staff members to wear scrubs.
Sure.
To work if they wanted, because they felt that was safer and, um, you know, for them, so. So there's some things that we can do on that and I'll work through those individual ones. The mass group stuff has all been ordered now and we're working through some of the individual specialty ones. Like, for example, the tech ed class pointed out that, um, they wanted a generic GoPro-type camera so he could do demonstrations of inside the engine and show the kids that without getting the kids all around the engine. That's, that's relatively inexpensive, yeah, but it makes sense. Band had quite a few well-identified needs, you know, individual mallets instead of children of the mallets, different things like that, which, um, special face coverings that they make or face shields that they can still play their instrument, but it keeps the spit from flying. Apparently the flutes are far now the most challenging instrument to keep the saliva contained. So we ordered some side shields for those and they have a special little face shield. They make a face covering with a blowhole, like. They wanted that for the students and they felt that it would give that benefit. It was relatively expensive, so we ordered face coverings with blowholes. Kids can play their instruments. But, yeah, I, I would say that's kind of where it is. But since the, the governor's order, you know, I think that we needed a lot of the stress that some of this. Any other questions? Our seclusion restraint report, I had a couple of directors at anniversaries. I'm sorry, so I'm not to worry about the meetings tonight. So I'll go ahead and share, this is our annual report that we need to provide in it. A seclusion or restraint is any time that a, seclusion is when a student is isolated away from their peers that we, you know, for behavior or they need to calm down. Total number of students who are involved, so you see we have a hundred and fifty-four that involve a total of sixteen students that were secluded all year. And I know that's a, that's, that's down. I think the staff have done a lot of training.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
They might as well approach us.
How do these numbers compare to prior years?
Yeah, it's, it's down quite a bit, especially in regards to just the seclusion. We'll see. And we could ask for a future one, generally they'll include those, the historical piece. Because of the sixteen, all sixteen were identified as a student with a disability. And, you know, just alone at a hundred and fifty-four sounds like a lot, but when we look at our, like our ACE program alone, which has, you know, emotional behavior students, that's less than one a day in a school year. Now, we didn't lose a third a day or about a fourth of the year. So this number should be.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, but it did, but, um, that's still pretty good when we're looking at district-wide.
How many students do we have that are identified as students with disabilities?
Are we twelve percent though?
I say about twelve percent, twelve to fourteen maybe.
So it's, so it's four hundred.
Okay, so sixteen students out of four hundred. Basically.
And they don't have to have a disability or anything where they have to.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying that they were all kids with disabilities. So just was wondering how, what the percentage of that was.
Now, the, the physical restraint was a hundred and sixty-three. There were seventeen students who were involved and all seventeen had a disability. The physical restraint can be as simple as a escorting. You know, but they have different restraints that they're trained in through what's called PPI, Training, Crisis, Prevention, Intervention. And they do a lot of work with de-escalation, so you don't have to get to that point. But when a student is a, a risk to themselves or to others, then they will do a full restraint. And the most common one is an escort to a seclusion. So they'll go from that to a seclusion. Any questions? Great. There's a number of resignations to go through. Melissa Moon, who is a teaching assistant at Westside, will not be joining us for the two thousand twenty-three month school year. Diane Coleman, who is a cook at Westside, won't be joining us. Into UP got a position closer to home as a school counselor, so I want to thank her for her service. Jason Lawrence is stepping down as a baseball assistant coach. Mark Halls is, his work schedule will allow him to work as a football assistant coach. And Amy Cruz, oh, those are the resignations, I want to thank all of them for their service. We have a number of appointments. Amy Cruz is a kindergarten teacher at Westside. She'll be replacing Katie Eas Anderson for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. And she's joining us, and she's been working as a teacher in the fourth case hearing step in personally. Leah Oldling will be joining us as a special education teacher at Westside. Melissa Chumkey will be joining us as a first grade teacher at Jackson. She'll be replacing Melissa Rooker for the two thousand twenty-one school year. And then we have a number of appointments, our avid tutors again are the part-time staff. Marcia Barr, Megan Rudolph, Liberty Tidberg, and Preston Taylor as avid tutors. And then we have a transfer of Barbara Myers as the high school head coach, she'll be, or head coach. She'll be replacing Susan Wright. Any questions on any?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for August tenth, twenty twenty, including new employment contract condition upon passing the background check and district mandated jerk screening as presented.
I'll second it.
Moved in second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for August tenth, twenty twenty, including new employment contracts, condition to pass the background check and district mandated jerk screening as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
I do not have any gifts for this evening, um, present. I have a few announcements. I want to thank, um, all of the staff that helped with the graduation this past Thursday. We had lots of positive responses and, um, a lot of parents and community members expressing their appreciation and all the hard work that they did to put that together and provide the students with a face-to-face graduation that had a sense of a traditional graduation. And heard a lot of feedback that, you know, perhaps we should do the graduation outside every year. It doesn't hurt when the weather was gorgeous as it was.
Yeah, it was perfect for being August.
No kidding, I mean, that could have been a horrendous, horrendous week on a day.
Yeah, so it was a beautiful day and that went well. Let's see, we need to have a policy committee meeting to discuss Title IX regulations. So the policy committee members could just take that doodle survey and.
I think everyone's filled it out already.
I just did it.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I missed it. I missed it. They were waiting for me. I did fill it out though.
All right. Nicole Sotnarski, our high school front desk secretary, has agreed and been selected to serve as the head cheerleading coach. That came in after the agendas were out, but so we'll have it on the next board agenda for formal approval, but we want to make people aware as they're going to be starting their activities. And I know there's some people anxious out there, but I know what was going on with that. And prom is this Saturday, no grand march, approximately seventy-eight students will be at the Grand Janico for, we should give them plenty of space to spread out while they're dancing. We have plans and protocols in place for them. It's about if you're a guy going to prom, it's pretty lucky, it's like three girls, every one guy that's going, so. Otherwise, we do have a closed session and.
I move to adjourn to a closed session pursuant to the Kentucky State statute nineteen point eight-five one C to discuss a staff member's contract. The school board will not reconvene in an open session.
Is there a second? So moved in second into adjourn to a closed session pursuant to the Council of State statute nineteen point eight-five one C to discuss the staff member's contract. The board will not reconvene in a session. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.